Okay, the meeting is called to order at 6:30 on September 27th. Regular meeting of the planning board and we begin with public comment. So if there's anything that you would like to say about something that is not on the agenda, this is the time to say it. You'll have two minutes to say it, but it has to be about something that's not on the agenda. If you're going to come forward at any time during the meeting, please go over to the microphone over there because that microphone actually connects to FCTV and this is televised. And if you speak from your seats, no one else can hear you. So these aren't really microphone microphones, they're TV connecting things. So you have to go to yours when you want to speak. So is there anyone who would like to say something not on the agenda? I'm waiting for someone to take me up on that, nobody ever does. First on the agenda then is the minutes, Paul, we're minutes for two meetings.
Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting. You may want to just indicate that Pam is joining us remotely.
Oh, I'm sorry. One of our members hurt her leg and can't walk. Pam Harding Barrett, that black thing up on this part of the dais is a telephone and she's here by telephone and we're going to try to be aware when she wants to speak and to include her on our votes. And we're going to have to do spoken poll votes to be sure that we include Pam's vote also in order to accommodate her and hope that she gets well soon, that this doesn't hold her up for a long, a long time.
Aye, Pam.
Okay, now Paul.
Minutes. I was surprised to see the August 9th minutes haven't been approved, but I was at that day and they were continued. I had submitted them, but I reckon approval of the minutes of August 9th, 2022 as written and the minutes of September 13th, 2022 as correct.
Second.
All in favor, and John?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And Paul, and Pam?
Aye.
Thank you, it's like a practice. Okay, good. Now we can get going on our regular agenda. First up on the agenda, we have a planning board decision that would be for 464 Main Street, a site plan review application to construct a mixed-use building with 15 rental apartments, four of them affordable, and 900 square feet of commercial space located at 464 Main Street. And we had asked for a positive motion on that because this actually got applause for being such a good application and so smoothly resolved with all of the abutters. It was really wonderful, but I believe that it is going to be held. We're waiting an engineering report?
We actually did get the engineering report back. It's included in your packets, in new information underneath your packets. There were three minor changes that we communicated with the applicant on and they just came in this evening with revised plans. We may want to just walk through them to make sure that everything is to your satisfaction and if so, I believe that Melanie has prepared a draft motion with the updated dates.
Yeah, I think that we all have it here, but yeah, if you could just show us what's, what happened here.
Do you know which ones they are?
Will you be reading?
Yeah, I'll read.
Tonight? Is your mouth better?
Not really, but I'm getting used to it.
So for the record, my name is Jed Cornoch, town planner. As I mentioned, we communicated those minor adjustments to the applicant. They revised the plans and I'm just going to walk through them for you very quickly and there were just three items. The first was the engineering division. It noted that although the dimensional measurement was noted here on the revised plans, it was not here in the back of the lot. That has since been corrected. Additionally, on the detail sheet, the measurement for the ADA space was previously 8.3. It is now indicated to match eight feet, which, apologize for going back and forth here, but that is shown on the site layout in a note here, eight by eight, 18 feet. So again, it was just making sure that the detail matched the site layout plan. And I'm attempting to remember the third item, the dumpster, thank you very much. So they indicated that the dumpster may have a conflict with this parking space when the fence, the front fence gate is open. And so they pushed the dumpster back so that that enclosure would not interfere with this parking space. So with those three comments included, with everything is a cover sheet because there were changes to some of the plans and some were not in terms of their dates and you could see them here, some were revised on the 27th and so on and so forth. So the cover sheet will handle all of the revisions in one easy-to-read draft motion for you this evening, which we recommend that you read into the record. Planning office has no further comments.
Jed, is that circle showing the new 300-foot? What does the circle indicate?
This circle here?
Yeah.
I believe it's all the land uses within 300 feet.
So that abutters within the circle had to be notified by the new bylaw, is that right?
Yeah, there's a section in our regulations, I believe, that requires that part of the plan set be, one of the plans indicate land uses within 300 feet of the proposed area. So it's not necessarily all of the abutters, that's a different sheet, but this just indicates all the land uses within that distance.
That is the 300 feet, yeah.
One could say it's the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, then we can go forward.
Absolutely.
We had already closed the hearing.
Yes, you had.
I believe that we had. So is there any discussion from the board? Are we ready to hear the motion? Bob, thank you.
Draft, September 27th, 2022. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of XL 464 Main Street LLC to raise the existing motor vehicle service station and construct a new mixed-use building containing 15 apartments and 900 square feet of commercial space at 464 Main Street under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaws for plan entitled Site Plan Proposed Mixed-Use Building at 461 Main Street, Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Surveying, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated July 11th, 2022, with the latest revision of September 27th, 2022, eight sheets, as well as floor and elevation plans entitled Calcooz Pierre 464 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Bill Fornekary Architects, Inc., Sheets A1 and A2, scale 1/8 inch equals 1 feet 0 inches, dated July 5th, 2022, with the latest revision of September 8th, 2022, as well as landscaping and lighting plan, parking lot photometric lighting plan, and a building rendering with the following. Findings. The 30,770 square foot lot is located in the Business Redevelopment BR zoning district as well as in the Coastal Pond Falmouth Inner Harbor Overlay District. The property currently contains 1,686 square foot vacant motor vehicle service station and associated parking. The existing lot coverage by structure is 5.83%, 83%, while the existing lot coverage by structure parking and paving is 37.6%. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing motor vehicle service station and construct a new mixed-use building containing 15 rental apartments, nine one-bedroom apartments and six two-bedroom apartments and 900 square foot feet of commercial space on a portion of the building's first floor. Under the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, this 30,770 square foot lot allows for a total of 15.4 units at 20 units per 40,000 square feet. Additionally, as required in the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, 25% of the rental units for the 15 apartments will be affordable as defined by the zoning bylaw and all 15 units will be added to the Town Subsidize Housing Inventory, SHI. The applicant is proposing 25 parking spaces for the new uses, the addition of a dedicated bicycle parking area, the addition of new stormwater mitigation features and improvements to the landscaping and lighting on the property. The proposed lot coverages will be 18.8% by structures and 67.47% by structures, paving and parking. The Town of Falmouth Department have required and commented on the above-mentioned site plan and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include the building code review and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240 183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the applicant shall obtain an approval, an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Three, construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion sediment control standard conditions document. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the planning board, who is the permitting authority for this project. Four, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99.1. Afixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance.
Okay. There's a second? Is there any discussion? John?
Just one question. Since this is the first applicant that we've had and we are approving under the zoning bylaw, is it a requirement to tell us which, what the mixture's going to be for the affordable units? Are there going to be two one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms? Is it going to be four one? Is that a requirement?
It's not a requirement that was written into the bylaw.
Okay.
It's certainly one that could be considered if we go to amend the bylaw because it would be good information.
I don't even know if it's important or not, but it's just, since it's the first one, it's just curious.
Right. Well, we'll make a note of that as possible thing to be doing, thank you. Any other comments? No, we're ready to vote? All in favor of the motion as read. John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Paul? And Pam? Hello Pam?
Pam, can you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
That's like a nine. Okay, that's seven in favor, thank you and the motion passes. And that is going to be our first Mr. Cod project and it's a good-looking one in a very perfect place for it. So the town is better off for that project coming along. Next up, we have an ADU, Backyard ADUs, which is the name of the company, on behalf of Mark Delorme, a site plan review application for detached accessory apartment located at 345 Carriage Shop Road, which is in East Falmouth on Fresh Pond. We're nowhere close to the deadline and I believe this is still missing a plot plan?
Well, technically no. We did receive the plot plan just about an hour ago. However, in reviewing the plan as compared to the floor plans that were submitted, the measurements aren't exact.
He's going to speak as to why?
And apparently the applicant is going to address that issue.
Here's the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the board. Yes, so last time-
Could you please give your name?
Oh, my name is Tim O'Reilly. I work with Backyard ADUs and I'm presenting on behalf of Mark Delorme and his mother, who, which were building this ADU. So last time when we were here, we presented you a plan which was below the maximum square footage. We've increased our ADU size by three feet. The goal here was to adjust the bathroom to better allow for a shower where you can walk in, thinking about aging in place. So we're still below that maximum square foot value of 640. So where, where we've adjusted here is, we've made, I can zoom in, this slight arm here of the ADU a little bit longer that helped us reconfigure the bathroom. Is there a zoom in? Here we go. Yes, so our measurements here are from our surveyor. They vary just so slightly from our architectural drawings. That is because between our dwelling here and our garage, we have a firewall, so we have an extra layer of drywall and that dimension was unfortunately pulled in, that extra 5-inch sheet of drywall. So our numbers for our maximum square size are off by just a small amount. So our ADU here, as depicted, is 634 square feet, whereas our architectural drawings were within a square foot of that because of that drywall change or the error of pulling in that measurement of the drywall. Yes, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
No. Yep. I don't have any.
No, I don't have any. We, we have a draft motion ready to act on, but now it feels a little shaky and we've got a lot of time on our deadline. What's your advice?
I, I think that those measurements are negligible.
Right.
They're, they're not precisely exact, but they're within inches. So I would say if the board is comfortable, if they're creating an ADU, which is what you're looking for, meets all the requirements, it's still under the 40%, I would recommend that you consider approving it and reading the draft motion.
And not making you come back for another time. Okay, well, let's, let's do that. We do have the draft motion.
I, I think we could amend the draft motion just simply to put in that there is a slight discrepancy due to firewall measurements in the measurements and therefore-
You'd like to do that?
We noted it in here and that covers that, yeah, under the findings. So do you want the exact wording or would you add that?
Yeah, how would you word that, Pat? Pardon?
How would you word that? I would word it under the findings that, let's see. Okay, I would put it under the third paragraph and due to addition of a firewall, there is a small discrepancy.
No, because we've got a new drawing.
The board finds the amended floor plan-
The amended floor and plot plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Satisfactory.
Right.
Okay.
And when you consider we've okayed these with sketches-
And sketches.
Put it out there measuring accurately.
I mean, this just came up, so here I am on the spot trying to figure this out.
But I think we're bending over backwards a lot here.
The board finds, I forget what I said, the board finds-
Finds the amended floor plan satisfactory.
Right.
And then that covers that slight discrepancy. The other thing that I'd like to, before we read this and vote on it, because we had quite a discussion, one is the detached ADU. There was a statement that I thought we put in that then they had to go to the ZBA so there could be no question.
We don't, we don't need to do that because it's in the bylaw.
It's the bylaw.
I know it's in the bylaw, but I don't remember whether-
How are we doing a site plan here?
Pardon?
We are only doing site plan and design review. The granting authority is the ZBA.
I understand, okay.
My role as site plan-
Jim, I'm not arguing, but I know what people think and claim sometimes too. So I don't care.
I just was bringing it up because we had had a large discussion.
Because we don't need any amendment.
No, we don't.
Okay, but we do need to read it into the record. So we have a motion prepared.
Okay, draft, September 27th, 2022. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Alex Delorme to construct a detached accessory apartment at 345 Carriage Shop Road under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Building Permit Plan 345 Carriage Shop Road, 345 Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth, Mass., prepared by KLMIM Land Surveying, Inc., scale 1 inch equals 30 feet, dated July 8th, 2022, revised September 26th, 2022, along with floor plans and elevations entitled 345 Carriage Shop Road, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Backyard ADUs dated 9/18/22, Sheet A1 and 9/20/22, Sheet A2, as well as photos with the following findings. The 1.84 acre, 80,044 square foot lot is located in the Agricultural AAGA zoning district as well as in the Coastal Pond Wacoit Bay Overlay District. The property currently has the primary dwelling, a detached existing garage with a gravel driveway. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached accessory apartment. The property will have a total of three bedrooms, one bedroom and an office that counts as a bedroom in the primary dwelling and one bedroom in the accessory dwelling unit. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is 634 square feet, will be 40% of the 1,600 square foot principal dwelling. Additionally, the applicant states the property will provide a total of three parking spaces, therefore the proposed proposal complies with Section 240 38 I 3E and Section 240 108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. The board finds the amended floor plan satisfactory.
And plot plan.
And, and plot plan satisfactory. The Town of Falmouth Departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240 183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, pursuant to Section 240 38 I 3C of the zoning bylaw, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. Three, pursuant to Section 240 38 I 3D of the zoning bylaw, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. The owner occupied dwelling cannot be rented while the owner is absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months and weekly monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Neither the build, principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, section, pursuant to Section 240 38 I 6C of the zoning bylaw, an affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commission, signed by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Five, construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document, which can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the planning board, who would be the permitting authority for this project.
That's not true though.
So that needs to be stricken. That should be changed to the zoning board of appeals, who would be the permitting authority for this project. Six, the project shall not direct any storm, stormwater runoff to public property, abutters or public right of ways and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Seven, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99.1. Afixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance. Eight, the applicant shall install drywells, rain garden or other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. Nine, the applicant shall construct the project in compliance with all building code regulations that determined by the building commissioner.
Second.
Madam Chair, really quick, I apologize. Just at the very beginning, the name of the applicant is not Alex, it's Mark, so we just need to make that small adjustment as well. Apologize for that.
M-A-R-K or C?
M-A-R-K.
Yeah. Okay, that was opposed in seconds. All in favor, or is there any discussion? No, no. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, yes?
Pat, aye.
Pam?
Pam, you vote?
Pat, aye.
I heard her.
She said aye.
There it is.
Okay, that's-
Aye.
That's that.
Aye, aye, aye.
Now, we have another ADU, backyard ADUs, same company, on behalf of William Brenner this time. And this hearing also has been closed and ready for decision. Site plan review application for detached accessory apartment located at 3 Ruth Terrace, which is in Wacoit, east of Route 28. Is there any, let's have the draft first and we'll see if there's any discussion. Bob, do you want to rest or do you want to go forward?
I just need the right one, I don't-
I think it was in our, here.
In the packet.
Okay. Okay, we ready? Draft, September 27th, 2022. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of William Brenner to construct a detached accessory apartment at 3 Ruth Terrace under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Building Permit for Plan 3 Ruth Terrace, East Falmouth, Mass., prepared by KLMIM Land Surveying, Inc., scale of 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated July 8th, 2022, along with floor plans and elevations entitled 3 Ruth Terrace, East Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Backyard ADUs dated July 8th, 2022 and August 15th, 2022, as well as photos with the following findings. The 24,332 square foot lot is located in the Residence BRB zoning district and in the Coastal Pond Overlay Wacoit Bay. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached accessory apartment. The property will have a total of three bedrooms, a two-bedroom principal dwelling and a one bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The property will maintain the pre-existing count of three by converting one bedroom in the principal dwelling into an office. The applicant will widen the doorway to 48 inches to ensure this. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will be located behind the principal dwelling. The proposed accessory dwelling unit at 750 square feet will be, will be 40% of the principal dwelling and the applicant states that the driveway will allow parking for both dwellings and will comply with Section 240 231 3E and Section 240 108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. However, there are no marked spaces on the plan. The Town of Falmouth Departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240 231 3E and Section 240 108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. However, there are no marked spaces on the plan. The Town of Falmouth Departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240 183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, pursuant to Section 240 23 I 3C of the zoning bylaw, either the principal dwelling or- The property will have a total of three bedrooms, a two-bedroom principal dwelling, and a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The property will maintain the pre-existing count of three by converting one bedroom in the principal dwelling into an office. The applicant will widen the doorway to 48 inches to ensure this. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will be located behind the principal dwelling. The proposed accessory dwelling unit at 750 square feet will be, will be 40% of the principal dwelling, and the applicant states that the driveway will allow parking for both dwellings and will comply with Section 2402313E and Section 240108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. However, there are no marked spaces on the plan. The town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and finding pursuant to Article 39 of zoning bylaw. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, pursuant to Section 24023I-3C of the zoning bylaw, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year, or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. Three, pursuant to Section 24023I-3D of the zoning bylaw, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. The owner occupied dwelling cannot be rented while owner is absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months, and weekly monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, pursuant to Section 24023I-6C of the zoning bylaw, an affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commission, signed by the property owner, testing that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Five, construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion sediment control standard conditions document, which can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the ZBA, who will be the permitting authority for this project, zoning board of appeals. Six, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or public rights of ways, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Seven, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99.1, affixing illegible numbers required, time limit for compliance. Eight, the applicant shall install dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. Nine, applicant shall construct the project in compliance with all building code and regulations as determined by the building commissioner.
There's a second, is there any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Cat, aye.
Aye.
Pam?
Pam?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, that passed also, so two new ADUs.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, no, we, we got it, it's okay.
Aye.
We'll save those up for later.
Which one did you vote for?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. I thought you might be interested, I thought we would all be interested in the number of ADUs that we have approved since that bylaw was passed. And we had permitted 32. Forty-one have been filed, and 32 have been permitted. So, that's really a success of adding to the stock of affordable housing. And the pace at which we're receiving them seems to be accelerating, and now we have a company specializing in doing just ADUs. So, definitely, I hope you got a lot of business in Falmouth, that would be good. That's coming along. Next on our agenda, public meeting continuing on 237 Old Main Street. Site plan review application to add over 500 square feet of roof area and more than two parking spaces to the existing property located in North Falmouth at 237 Old Main Road. It's between Wild Harbor Road and County Road, it's in the historic district. And we have a letter from Kevin Clower, who is the attorney representing this, this applicant, and he is requesting a continuation of the site plan review, currently settled for tonight, until, in connect, please extend the deadline for the decision until October 31st. So, if we could have a motion to continue and extend?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Cat, aye.
Aye. Pam? Pam?
Aye.
Cat, aye.
Aye, she's, all right, we've got it, so it's 7:30.
Aye.
Aye, thank you for the continuation.
She's on a 10-second delay.
Mm-hmm?
She's on a 10-second delay.
Oh, right, that must be it.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, next on, next on our agenda is further public hearing on the zoning article that we are proposing, this board is proposing, for the fall 2022 annual town meeting. It is November 14th, I think?
It is, November 14th, yes.
November 14th, so we're, this is the second of our public hearings, and, but it's on a matter, the recodification of our current bylaw that was approved by town meeting last November, and subsequently, early this summer, not approved by the attorney general for very specific reasons. So, we are going, we have, we believe, dealt with, addressed those reasons, and are going back to town meeting now, seeking approval, given that they will have full information in the warrant on what they're voting on. And Jed is going to give us a presentation, and Bob Mitchell, who was one of the two experts who acted as our consultants on this four, four-and-a-half-year project, is here to also answer any questions that might come up. So, Jed, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record, Jed Cornoch, town planner. I just want to reiterate that at your last hearing, and this is a continuation of your public hearing, which you opened at your last meeting, September 13th, Bob Mitchell, our consultant, provided a very, very excellent overview of the recodification effort, talked about goals, talked about the information that was changed as part of Phase 1, highlighted some of the items that were to be deferred to Phase 2, which I'm going to get into in a little bit, and then talked about the format of the new bylaw. And so, Charlotte, you and I talked a little bit about, maybe tonight, we talk a little bit about the difference between what you just mentioned. At the last town meeting, the town meeting members voted on a version that is a little bit different than what we're providing tonight, and provided copies for folks in the audience who, who have scooped them up. They're going like hotcakes. So, I wanted to spend a little bit of time on that tonight and discuss some of those issues, but also really hone in on the items that were deferred to Phase 2, so that we can try to make sure that there isn't any confusion in regards to, you know, what is going to be coming back before town meeting in just another month or so. So, very, very quickly, Jed off, right off the top, just some important clarifications. We've talked a lot about it in our public hearing, about the difference, or what is recodification, and what the town meeting members voted on last time. Recodification, as you know, it's, we set out to reorganize and reformat, renumber, et cetera, but also we included additional text. And that, as Bob Mitchell mentioned at the opening presentation, was really the, the issue that the attorney general had, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But it's important to note these two phases, right? So, Phase 1 was all about that reorganization, adding text to clarify things, but also to bring it up to current state statute. And then Phase 2 is really talking about amendments to the bylaw. So, as Bob mentioned at the last meeting, you know, some of the things that the planning board was interested in changing or looking into is how we deal with restaurants, perhaps the parking regulations that we have. In fact, we started work on home occupation and home-based service business. So, that Phase 2 effort really is all about making amendments to the bylaw. So, we just wanted to try and make that clarification. Bit of background, which Charlotte, you've already provided, but I think it's important to note, and highlighted and read here, is, is the fact that the warrant article, which is in the very next slide, didn't adequately explain what the planning board was asking town meeting members to, to vote upon. And it's really just simple, it's these two parts here. The first part is, I'll hover over with my cursor here, and we talked about this at, at a previous meeting, but this word here, some deletions, in order to address these items, which, you know, Bob Mitchell mentioned at the last hearing, it weren't just deletions, there were additions, too. And so, the attorney general, you know, seeing that, noting that we really should have indicated that there were not only deletions, but also additions. So, just making sure that everyone's aware that the procedure is the issue at hand. However, in that one-year period, in between November of '21 and November of '22, one-year-ish, we've had an opportunity, as the planning staff and all other practitioners who have used the bylaw, to go through it and say, oh, you know, there's a minor mistake here. This reference really should be corrected because the letter is A, and it really, it shouldn't be E. So, we found some errors along the way, and we had an opportunity to fix that. And that, those are the items that I'm going to cover in a little bit, the difference between what was voted on at November of '21, and which we're bringing forward in November of '22, 2022. So, everyone knows this, after we received that informal document from the attorney general, which itemized some substantive changes, we regrouped, we met with our consultants, we basically categorized all of the comments into these, into these categories, as you see here. Now, tonight, I'm going to talk about deferred to Phase 2 in, in more detail. But on our website, I summarized these, these categories in a little bit more detail. So, if anyone's interested, they can go to our website, which I'll highlight at the very end, and they can learn more about some of the other items included in that list. So, for clarity's sake, on the left is the first page of what we received from the attorney general's office, that informal document, back in July. And as you can see at the very top, I'm going to zoom in here. Substantive changes. That's part of the reason why we're using that language in the new warrant article, is because the attorney general said, that's what we did. So, to be clear with everyone involved, we're saying, in our warrant article language, which I'll get to in a minute, this is what we're doing, because we've addressed all of the comments within this document, shown on the right-hand side. And so, at the last hearing, or at the last meeting where we opened the hearing, on the right-hand side, Bob Mitchell went through several of the comments, and as you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, it's a exact replica of the document on the left, with our consultants' responses underneath, highlighted in yellow, indicating that perhaps it was, it was a mistake made by the attorney general, because at times, they said, well, this is new text. And it was actually text that was still in the bylaw, it just was in a different location and they missed it. Perhaps it was new text, and so they addressed it with comments highlighted in yellow. There was also items that we deferred to Phase 2, and so I'm going to get to those now. And again, those are highlighted in yellow, and I want to just take the opportunity to indicate that we have copies of this document here, for anyone who would like a copy of it. We also have posted it on our webpage, which I'll get to at the very end. And we're happy to answer any questions about any of those items. However, there are 85 of them. I don't know that the audience wants me to go through all 85 comments, I suspect not. But again, if, if folks are interested, I will certainly make the time to go through it. So, here's the new warrant article. We made careful consideration, in fact, we received information from the attorney general's office as a template, if you will, an example of language that we could use, and we crafted that around what we received. And we included the language of clerical and substantive changes, because again, that's what they called us, that's what they said we did. We may disagree, but in the end, that's what they said we did. There's reorganizing, there's renumbering and reformatting, but then there's also important text here where we talked about how we updated text, we added text to clarify things, we corrected typographical errors, et cetera, et cetera. So, I want to make sure that that's as, as clear as possible, that all we're trying to do is indicate that when we went in November of '21, that we simply didn't itemize all of the items that were included, and now we're doing that as part of this effort. But as I said before, because we had that year and that opportunity to use the bylaw over that course of time, maybe nine months or so, we had the opportunity to identify items that we may not have seen at the beginning. So, here are some main differences between the version that was voted at November '21 and the version that we're asking town meeting members in a month or so to, to approve. First and foremost, we addressed all of the AG's comments, those 85 comments. I won't go through them again, but again, we're going to highlight some that were deferred to Phase 2. We fixed some errors and omissions, so Scrivener's errors, those were easy, those are the ones that I mentioned before. A should have been E, two should have been one, et cetera. Accessory apartments, as we noted in several of our reviews, for some reason, that language just didn't include some of the language that was in the old bylaw. So, it was just an omission. So, we have the opportunity to bring it back, and it reflects exactly the language that is in our current bylaw that we are using now. In addition to that, the Fresh Ponds table, you may remember that that table was revised, and it included, instead of what was previously there, elevations, it included acreage. So, we, again, we had an opportunity to fix that and revert back to what is in the current bylaw now, which is the elevations. Simple omission, an error, we fixed them, we moved on. Importantly, number three is, at the November '21 town meeting, the town meeting members approved the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. They also approved definitions to that bylaw, and revisions to site plan review, is it, in terms of its notification distances. So, all of those actions were taken right before the recodification. So, the ver, the version that went to the attorney general didn't have that, because, you know, obviously, it happened right before it. So, we have this opportunity to add it now, and it is included in the version that, again, is not on the table because people are picking it up. But we do have copies at the planning office, if anyone would like one. And then lastly, which we'll touch upon a little bit tonight, we addressed some comments related to mixed use in the business district. That's been an ongoing discussion on whether or not the current bylaw accurately reflects whether or not mixed uses, mixed uses are allowed in that district. So, I'm going to touch upon that at the very end. Some updates on that end. So, very quickly, the next three slides are the six items that we deferred to Phase 2, and Bob Mitchell touched upon this at the, at the last meeting. They're very simple, it's essentially agricultural districts in relation to wind energy systems. There was confusion about, should they be allowed in all of the agricultural districts? Currently, they're only allowed in two. And so, because it was still a question, we deferred that to Phase 2, rather than, as you can see here, it was changed to allow special permit in all three. So, an error, when finding that error, the question came, is this right? Do we really want to not allow it in one of the districts? And because we didn't have an answer readily available, we decided to defer that to Phase 2 for a longer discussion, and keep the language that's currently in the bylaw now. Same applies to number two, again, it was, uses allowed by right, and so, because, again, there wasn't a clear answer, another example of it gets deferred to Phase 2 for a longer discussion. Number three is related to home occupations, and there was some debate on the use of, or the limits imposed on motorized equipment. There was some time differences, there was an inclusion of Sunday, again, that was a change. We deferred it to Phase 2, recognizing that it was a change in, in the language of the bylaw, for a deeper discussion, and we'll bring that back to either spring or fall town meeting as an amendment, if the board decides that that's, that's a worthwhile endeavor. Then the last three, first is planned residential development. There was a change to the requirement for open space. You can see it was changed from 65% to 60%. The attorney general noted that as a, as a change, and again, because the working group was, you know, uncertain as to whether or not that wanted to move forward under this phase, that was deferred to Phase 2 for a deeper discussion. Number five is Article 10, non-conforming structures, uses, and lots. That's been an ongoing topic. That article was completely rewritten to reflect state statutes, and so that was, that was one of the, the major changes that was voted upon at, at November '21 town meeting. However, again, the attorney general noted it was a, a significant change, and because we want to make sure that this bylaw doesn't go too far from those changes, we deferred that to Phase 2 for another deeper discussion. So, we reverted back to the old language, the current language that we're using now. And then the last one, it's, I apologize, it's small, but, but there's a lot here. So, Bob Mitchell mentioned at the, at the last meeting that restaurants was one of your top priorities and how we handle it, adopting some new language and, and really taking a harder focus on that. Again, many items that were changed, attorney general noted them, because it's such a larger topic, using the old language, we just deferred these changes to Phase 2 for, again, a deeper discussion with the working group, and then bringing it forward to the planning board with a public hearing just like this. So, lastly, added information, covered it before, Articles 3, 4, and 5 from November '21. November '21, mixed residential and commercial overlay district, the definitions and the revisions to site plan review. So these are some of the positive changes to the bylaw. And then, again, the mixed use in the business district. So, I'm going to pause there, because just today, I believe we've made some progress, and I'm hoping Attorney Ahmed will agree with me, that we've come up with some language that we think that satisfies the question of, is mixed use allowed in the business district? And I'm going to pause right here and just call up the new language. So first and foremost, you know, thank you to Attorney Ahmed for suggesting this revision, and you have it in your packet tonight. There's also copies up on the table, if anyone is interested. But essentially, what it does is, if you remember, in the current recodified bylaw, under residential and commercial mixed use...
Two does it for me, that's what I mean.
It has, and I apologize, these categories here, this is B1, this is B2, this is B3, and this is BR. In the current bylaw, the recodified version has N's across, and I believe it's a Y currently in the BR district, because as you know, BR district allows the mixed use. So this language here, adding in basically the language that combines any commercial service, business, or commercial uses permitted by right or by special permit, together with one or two dwelling units, I believe satisfies the, is the question, is mixed use allowed? And we've talked at length about this in the past, under the current bylaw, multiple uses, I believe it's 240, Section 240, 18.1 explicitly says, when you have, in the business districts, and actually, the light industrial A, you're allowed to mix uses. You can have a number of multiple uses in your lot, provided that you satisfy the dimensional requirements of that district. And so, we believe that this language, I believe this language satisfies the question. And in addition to this, because multifamily use is allowed in the business districts via special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals, a combination of that, and, as I mentioned before, community service, business, and commercial uses, would be a special permit within those three districts. However, in the BR district is allowed by right, as indicated currently in the bylaw. I'm not going to go through the lengthy information here, because there is quite a few notes, but what I would say, unless, of course, you'd like me to go through it, is that this is all existing language in the bylaw currently. So this paragraph, this paragraph, and this paragraph already exist in the bylaw, we're simply putting it into the use table, in addition to this paragraph. This section here, and I'm just going to highlight it quickly, hopefully everyone can see that, that is some new language that essentially just identifies the fact that mixed use, as you all know, and as the audience knows as of tonight, it's allowed by right and not by special permit in the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, and it makes reference to that section. We have been advised that perhaps the elimination of note would likely be helpful, and so, you know, I'll just sort of do it today and just say that this may be, if agreeable, what the new language might say.
How about just putting Y's next to a two? Yes, yes, yes?
Well, that would be, I think, a little bit too far, but it makes reference to the section...
It says without special permit, so that would be a yes. I just thought that's what it meant.
I understand what you mean. And, you know, to further that point, I think that because this question of, is mixed use allowed in the business district, is a little complicated, and the language is a little long, this, we believe that this language satisfies the question for, let's call it for now. And we would like to bring this back up in Phase Two to make it a bit more clear. I like the idea of having brevity in those use tables, so if we can create some simple language and simple ways to understand that, I think that perhaps we defer that to Phase Two. But currently, I believe that this language satisfies it. In fact, we run it by our consultants, and they agree as well. So I'll simply leave it at that, unless there are other comments that you'd like to entertain at this time, and then I was going to move on to the presentation, finish it out, and then we can address any comments or questions, if you are okay with that? I think Pat has a question.
Yeah, I'm... Pat?
Because these comments are scattered throughout, and the AG had problems with it before, and we don't want to turn down, and this is kind of a new format in here. When it is sent up to the AG's office, would it be advisable, I'm not saying we have to, but would it be advisable to tell the AG exactly where these things can be found in the original document?
I'll do anything that's necessary. But I think it's a great idea, and at town meeting floor, it's likely going to be part of the presentation, to make sure that all town meeting members understand that this language is clarifying a question, and it's existing in the bylaw, and town meeting members can make up their minds at that time. But at least we're informing them, because again, that was the main issue here, was that clarity.
It's my understanding there's been some back and forth between the town and the AG's office, as we went ahead fixing up this in order to send it back, so that in effect, we've already got a conversation going.
We've got a conversation, but this could be a red flag, because it's a new formation of...
Format, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can certainly check with town council, just to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything the correct way, so we don't run into this issue again.
Right. Substantive, actually, is one of those words that just opened to interpretation. So the AG's interpretation of what substantive was different from ours, and we don't know where it's going to differ next time around. There'll be no knowing, but we're trying to err on the side of caution.
So, lastly, this is the last slide, and then I'll sit down and entertain questions. But what are we doing about, how are we spreading the word? We're doing everything that we can. Charlotte, you wrote a letter to the enterprise just a week and a half ago, perhaps two. We've created a frequently asked questions document, again, here for everyone to take home with them. Basically outlines, what is this process, why are we doing this again, et cetera. We're doing this public meeting, I'm actually before the ZBA this week to explain it to them as well. We're planning on posting on the town's website and the news feed. We've got a brand-new webpage, which outlines everything, it's a place where everyone can go and grab it and learn more about the process. We just received 250 copies of the bylaw, which we plan to mail to each one of the town meeting representatives, with a letter that explains exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it, encouraging them to support it, and encouraging them to ask us questions, if they have any. And of course, we have printed copies at Town Hall. So this is the final piece of my presentation, this is the recodified, or the recodification webpage. First and foremost, the link to the electronic copy is here, so it'll simply open up, and you know it's the most recent version, because November of 2022 is down at the bottom. A brief explanation of what happened at Phase One, our review, the explanation of the Attorney General's review, and again, this link here is the document which includes all of the town's, or the consultant's response to all of those comments. This is the frequently asked questions document, which I just referenced there. There's a presentation that I provided to the board, where we, I talked about it a little bit briefly before, those categories. So this presentation, this link will actually open up that presentation, where we go through, I won't actually get there, here we go, some of the examples of all of those categories. Video from that presentation, video from the opening of the public hearing, separated articles, so if folks are interested in one particular article, and they want to learn more about it, they can download individual articles. And then, all of the proposed changes are listed here. This is the language that comes directly from the yellow highlighting document, so everything is here. So if you're at the coffee shop or at the gas station, and someone's asking about recodification, tell them about this webpage, this is where you go.
For that?
Exactly. So with that, I'm going to stop, because that is the last piece of information, I know we have a busy agenda tonight, and so I think it's time for any public comment or questions?
Any comments? Thank you very much, that's a really clear presentation, I want to thank you, and Michaela, and Melinda for the changes on the website, it makes it much easier to find everything, that's a big help to us. Board members, any comments? Paul?
Yeah, I have two comments. One is, this obviously has to go to town meeting. Are we going to be able to meet the deadline to go to town meeting with this? I mean, that's the intent.
Yes, that is the intent. So you have the ability to continue this hearing to your next meeting, which is October 11th. At that meeting, you would need to close and provide a recommendation to the select board. We need to give it to the town manager's office by a couple of days after that. So you have one more opportunity to continue.
The second comment, if I may, that's a very, very detailed response, and I give you a lot of credit for the effort going into it, but I'm curious whether the Attorney General's office gets into a cyclical review. Oh, do it again, do it again, or will this put an end to it at one time? Maybe Bob could respond to that.
He's done it more than I have, for certain. I might just say, I hope not. We're hoping that this satisfies them, but I'll let Bob Mitchell address that.
Good evening, all. I'm Bob Mitchell, I'm one of the consultants on this zoning project. A couple of things that give us a lot more confidence going around the second time. One is, and Jed mentioned this, the key word substantive has been added to the public hearing notice and to the warrant language, and that was the word the Attorney General kept using. So having that word in the notice is, addresses really her main concern, which was the weakness of the hearing notice and the warrant language. So I think from that angle, that's very, very helpful. And second, and I've worked with a lot of towns and a lot of town, and as has been noted, Bob Ritchie was the municipal law unit head, who wrote all those letters for many years. I can tell you, the last thing the Attorney General wants to do is get into a cyclical letter-writing campaign with the towns. They want the towns to get their bylaws adopted and their amendments to adopt it. So I think it was a surprise to get that letter, but I guarantee anything, but I certainly am not expecting another letter like that.
Thank you.
I definitely like that.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
Hello?
Hi, Pam.
Yeah, we're here, Pam.
Well, then, if there aren't any questions...
I'm back on now.
Then, I think we can move on, and Bob Mitchell, did you want to say something further?
No, I have just one second.
Oh, okay. Then I think we can let this go. We've tried as thoroughly as we could to cover all of our bases on this and be able to get to the town meeting members, so that they'll feel comfortable passing it again. We didn't expect to see it coming back, but we hope it won't come back for another time. But that would be that.
So do we want to continue with, just for one more meeting, and then have our recommendation ready to go, to be voted on at that point?
I think that it might be prudent, because we have no idea who's listening tonight.
Correct.
And what they might be thinking, and what they might want to pitch in on it, so let's leave it open for another night. It happens that I'll be away on the 11th, but Pat will be here, and I'm sure it will go smoothly. But before we do move on to something else, I want to thank Bob Ahmed for the time he's taken to help us work out the business about the language on the business zone, and what's allowed there as far as mixing residential and commercial things. Thank you very much, that was really helpful. So with that, we'll continue this until the 11th, when Pat will walk you through what we hope is an easy approval. Okay, next on our agenda, could I just interrupt this a moment to ask, what you are here for? Is there some way we could move it up on the agenda to help you out?
ADU at 5 Canopitsit.
Ah, okay, if, there's no objection, let's move that up on the agenda, so that the child can get to bed. Okay, so...
Thank you. Charlotte, too.
Is it really?
Her name is Charlotte, too.
Huh, well then, all the more reason. So we're going to next take a look at, well, I find it here on the agenda...
Greg Clancy Construction.
I'm going to skip over the fire station, it's Greg Clancy Construction, on behalf of Aaron Vois, site plan review application for an accessory apartment located at 5 Canopitsit? Canopitsit Drive?
Yeah, it's, yes.
Which is in East Falmouth, Central Ave, near Route 28. So, sir, if you could give your name and make your presentation.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Shane Mason, I represent Greg Clancy Construction, we'll be doing the work on this property.
Can you hear your name?
Shane Mason.
Shane Mason, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. What we're looking to do is do just the downstairs in the basement, do an accessory dwelling unit. It does come in under the 40%, at 37.5%. With that being said, we're just going to do minor work inside to make it an accessory dwelling unit, give them their own laundry, they'll have their own entrance, that sort of thing. I think we have almost every comment that came back, the only two that we saw that had anything to say was really that we were to put the address on the side of the building, and also, there were some questions about parking, but I think in the package, it is pretty well spelled out, there's a significant amount of parking in the large space, in the driveway, coming down to the downstairs unit itself. And those were the only two comments that we saw. That being said, I do have the owner here as well, and of course, Small Charlotte, and she also was nice enough to bring along, one of the butters was nice enough to pin a nice little, we would like that to happen, Mr. Fay, who's at 12 Canopitsit, he said that he is in favor of the accessory dwelling as well. Do you have any questions at this time?
That's good to hear, we need to go back first and hear about the notice.
Yeah. For the record, the public meeting notice was published on this issue on 9/9/22, and 31 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Okay, so is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? No. Well, the reading of your project given by the planning department is that it meets all the requirements for an accessory apartment, that there's no problem at all with the project that you're proposing, and it is an interesting aspect that I'd like to sort of highlight. This is a pre-existing ADU, it was already here, and actually, I'm sure there are many of them all over town, but this is a person who is coming forward and wants to make sure that it's been legitimated in a way, that that is going to be correctly identified, correctly certified, and approved by this board. So that's a really nice step, it's good to see you taking it, thank you very much.
It's our pleasure representing Greg Clancy, they want to do the right thing.
Yes, that's clear you want to do the right thing. So this is really very good, and that it meets the requirements, so that the main thing was the meeting of fire code, but other than that, it was fine. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Madam General.
Are there any questions from the board?
Don't have to worry about elevations or anything, so it's in the structure, so...
It's there already, so it clearly goes along with what's there.
I do have a comment or a question, however you want to look at it, because this is in the basement, because I can't tell from looking at the diagram...
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Where is the entrance and the exits, so you can get out of the basement?
Certainly, ma'am. So you have the downstairs, so that you can come in in the front as well, and then here to the side, as you see right here, you have the entrance right there, there's that door that goes to the exterior. So there is actually a stairway going down, and then there's a pad right there to the side, and that is their own entrance right there.
Okay, but, see, what I'm not seeing is, because this looks like it's all blocked off, so that looks like a dead end, it doesn't look like there's a door into the apartment, because of the yellow coloration of the lines.
I think what we were trying to go for there was just the square footage, we were just trying to highlight what the square footage was going to be inside.
I do, it looks as if you can go into two closets, but you can't go from the entryway into the kitchen room. The kitchen is labeled, but there seems to be a solid wall separating...
That would be an error on our part, that is open right there, my apologies.
Okay, and where was the other? And where, where was the other entrance?
You have the stairway coming down from the upstairs right there ma'am. Then you have the slider here going to the outside. So you have the side entrance and a slider right there.
Oh, and that's not clear either, that the slider.
I think by highlighting it in the yellow, it didn't delineate it the way it should. My apologies.
For all of us.
Yeah, right.
So which wall is open on the right-hand side?
This is a slider right here.
Did you all see where the open wall is?
And right here.
Yeah, and where the slider is.
It's an entrance.
Which is the open wall though? This one?
This one. It's got to be the open wall, yeah. It looks like, as Charlotte pointed out, two closets there.
Yeah, any other questions or comments? No, it looks fine. And what the planning office has written, the application meets all the requirements to be found in the zoning bylaw for ADUs. So I think what we'll do is request a positive motion for October 11th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right.
So Shane, you do not need to come back to the next meeting. We'll just read it into the record.
Okay, now let's go back on the agenda to where we were. And we can all say goodnight to Charlotte.
Goodnight Charlotte.
Goodnight Charlotte.
Goodnight Charlotte.
It's a tiny baby.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Some outfit.
We look sleepier than the baby does. Okay, next, the applicant, Bowler Engineering. On behalf of the town of Falmouth, this is a continuation of a public hearing, a public meeting, site plan review application to construct a new fire station located at 878 Sandwich Road. And I believe, uh... We have somebody here ready to speak to this?
I'm just going to give you the reference as well, so you can pick which one to start with.
All right. So my name is Jared Walsh, representing Bowler Engineering. Working on the project as the civil engineering group behind the design for the fire station. So just to give you a summary of where we left off since our first appearance before the board in late June, we had had some back and forth. We had received a engineering referral from the engineering division with the DPW pretty much at the same time as our appearance before the board, back in late June. Since that point, we had had some conversation with the engineering reviewer, with the engineering division, and issued some interim supplemental information for stormwater report and design plans that have progressed the drawings since that point in time. So I can just summarize where we're at with the, this is the grading and drainage plan I have pulled up here for your viewing. So we had expanded some of the basin areas and reduced the depth on some of those stormwater features on the sides of the building here. You can see on the plan right, there are three stormwater features on that side of the building. And we had also expanded the stormwater basin on the left, plant left side of the building here. And that was a result of the comments from the engineering reviewer, just providing some additional storage to get, to capture that volume of the 100-year storm across the, the site. So as a result of that, we had previously shown our leaching area for the subsurface absorption system in this back-left corner of the property. That has since moved, shifted slightly downward. To give proper separation for, from that infiltration basin area to that system, we needed a certain amount of setback from that point to meet design code on that system design. So that's basically where we're at for stormwater. We would also provided some additional pretreatment for the basins over on this side of the, the site. We had added some water quality swales to this, to these two basins here as a request of the peer reviewer. So largely, the site layout has remained unchanged. We're still proposing three curb cuts off of Sandwich Road. That hasn't changed since you had last seen the plan. And the building footprint also has remained the same. So to give you where we're at now in the project, we had submitted these plan documents and supplemental drainage calculations to the peer, the engineering division reviewer back in early September. He had went through a, a little time with COVID, so he had been kind of slow to give us a response, which is understandable. So we had just received a second round of referral comments, closing out the original comments that he had provided in his original referral. But there had been some additional comments that had been introduced to the second referral letter. So in the time that we've had to get our arms around that since yesterday evening, we had reviewed and gotten on the phone with the reviewer from the engineering division. As most of the comments we saw were really just asking for some design intent additions to the plan, like adding some spot shots, altering some contours and kind of updating our stormwater model to kind of meet how some of these stormwater features should be routed to get to the design points we're showing for the systems. So we feel that, after, and after talking with Scott, who is Scott Schluter with the engineering division, we had talked with him today, and he had agreed with us that the plans will largely be unchanged to, to answer these comments and kind of give him some supplemental information. So like the stormwater basins, we, we won't need to alter the locations largely to meet what comments he had provided. He just wants some clarification and minor additions to the plan, which we have reviewed with him on a call. So we will be working with him tomorrow to kind of run through the comments one by one and see what he wants on the plans exactly, so we can close those out quickly and efficiently. And we're hoping to ask of the board to provide a conditional approval for the project as the project is still sub, still applicable to pass a stormwater permit issuance, which will be finalized and provided by the engineering division. So his comments will need to be closed out before that stormwater permit is even issued to the project, which we are working on, closing out these comments as quickly as we can. So that's the, the request we're making of the board at this time.
Before we respond to that request, in among, that was a very extensive engineering report with an awful lot of red ink on it. And it was mentioned about a landscaping plan. Not marking trees, some other comments about landscaping. Could you show us that landscaping plan?
Yep.
And would you mind pointing out, where is the back of your lot? And how close to the paving and the, the area for snow removal come to the back line?
Yes. I don't know the dimension off the top of my head. It appears to be around 10 to 15 feet, just eyeballing it from a planned scale of this scale. But I could get an exact dimension for you.
And that's the landscape plan?
This is the landscape plan here, yep.
Looks kind of naked. Is, is, are you not planning to plant anything back?
In the rear portion, we were hoping not to include plantings in that rear portion of the property. Like the, as has been made very clear throughout the design process with the building committee, they don't have the real staff available to maintain a lot of additional plantings on site. So we've kind of been working with them to kind of provide a landscape plan that provides a sufficient amount of plantings and gives a nice design feel, but also doesn't require extensive maintenance and mowing and stuff of that nature to upkeep those features.
I see. Well, we have an abutter who would like to speak, and firstly, on that issue. So I think we're going to leave time for that. That be you? Hi. Would you like to do that now?
Sure. Can I, well, we can just use this, but then I would love to be able to also take a look at a Google satellite view of this. My name's Kristen Connor, and I live at 16 Little Farm Lane, which in this image is directly beyond the property line, like directly. It's, my house is, my driveway is, is pretty much on that line. My house goes directly next to it. And so I'd like to, of course, thanks to, to Mr. Kornok for keeping me apprised of when we could.
Way too far.
Originally. Thank you Jed. It's, we've been talking about this for, for months, and so I'm happy to be here. It seems that perhaps you've read my, my note that I submitted?
That was a good letter, yes.
Thank you. So I can just summarize it again. We're directly to the west of the, the property, so it's, it's right there. And if all of that is cleared and if there are no trees, if there's no evergreen screening or fencing put up there, this, the, both the employee parking spaces and then also the, the fire trucks, when they come around the back, will be shining their headlights directly into my house. So what we are hoping to, we're, we're very pleased as homeowners that the firehouse is going to be here, and we, we welcome it as our, our neighbor. But we'd really like to make sure that there are trees maintained. It sounds like that's not in the plan right now. And that there's the addition of evergreen screening and/or stockade fencing that is put up at the back of the, the snow clearing area, which goes directly to the property line to, to protect us from both noise and light that would be coming into our home. That's it? Those are my questions. I don't know what the next steps are. I'd, I'd love to look at it on Google Maps if we can. Thank you for your help.
So this is the parcel itself?
16 Little Farm. So are, are all of these trees beyond the yellow line going to be left and maintained?
Where?
Because you can see my house is marked at 16.
Yeah, you're never going to see that.
Where is your house?
It's six, marked as 16.
At 16, so it looks to me as if you're...
If this is all going to be maintained as trees?
Not maintained, just remaining.
Just left the way it is.
All it is is woods.
If those are going to be left as woods, then we are happy.
So is that the plan? That just?
Thank you for your time.
Steve Kirby with the Vertex Companies, we're the OPM for the project. Just, just to clarify that, everything here behind the fire station site between, between the site and your property here, that's all existing to remain wooded area. I think you, you were thinking that we were clearing all the way back to your property line.
I did think that.
But, but we're not. Where, there's, there's 592 feet on the property line from Sandwich Road to the back property line. We're only clearing back 276 feet, plus or minus.
It looks as if you'll have at least two, two, two and a half acres separating you from the house that we're concerned about right now.
This is, this is all property owned by the town of Falmouth, but
Right, but it's...
this was actually the area that there was discussion about possibly adding a ball field, right? So.
All wooded?
Yes.
This, this is all wooded?
And will remain wooded?
If it remains wooded, I am very happy.
As part of this project, it remains wooded.
Jim?
Well, I don't think we can promise it remains wooded. The town has a right to do things within the future.
So as part of this project.
Claire, it may be another hearing, but as far as tonight, you're okay?
Yeah.
I just didn't want you to say remain wooded. That is, that's not...
Not forever.
The town can't do something without coming forward and getting here.
It'd have to come back again, yes.
And you'd have to get a notice?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm glad we took care of that. Okay, back to your question.
Can I make a comment, please?
Please.
If you look at the drawing by Feldman of existing additions, I don't know if you have that. As you indicated, the whole lot from Sandwich Avenue all the way to the back is 592 feet. Only using 275 for the treatment, for the, that area is only 275 feet for the fire station. That means there's 317 feet from the property line all the way back, back there. So it's quite a bit of land. It's not an abutter right on the property line. Well, I can appreciate the concerns, and maybe there's something you can do to minimize any kind of lights going through there, but it's not that close.
No.
There's still be a concern about light coming through in the winter when the leaves are down, but I would assume, oh, we shouldn't assume it, that any stand pole lights or lights on the building are going to be shielded in such a way that they're just downlights. Is that right?
Yeah. Ellen Light from Context Architecture can speak to that.
We put together a little diagram that might show you, it's similar to that.
It should be just down on the shelf.
I'm sure there's a bunch of evergreens in there.
Um, yeah, it's pretty red.
You have to use the mouse. There's a pull-out drawer with a keyboard and mouse. One of these days, we're going to get that touchscreen.
Okay.
We keep asking.
Thank you. Okay, this is our diagram. So you can see that this is the rear part, property line of our project, right here where I'm, where I have the pointer. And this is the land we're talking about. And as everyone said, that land is going to stay the way it is. That wooded land, even in the winter, when the trees fall, you're going to have all the trunks there, branches. And there's also a mix of some evergreens in there, as well as low shrubs. So we really don't think that you're going to have a light issue. We looked at, see this little car here? We put a little car there. That car is about, I'm sorry, I probably left my piece of paper over there. It's about 140 feet from your, the, the light from that car only goes about 140 feet. So then there's another, like 150 feet before it gets to your house. And then as far as the returning trucks, the other thing I want to say about the staff parking is that the shift changes are only once a day in the morning at 7:00, so you wouldn't have spillage from the staff parking over to your property, even if it was clear cut, which it won't be. And then is, in terms of the engine coming in, these are returning engines. There might be one in a night. They come in very rarely. It's a very quick process to bring the engine and back in. They, they don't egress from the station on that side, so it might be less than a minute. We'll, there'll be light, it'll be a very short period of time, so. Does that answer your question? It does. If that remains wooded, I think we'll be in shape. And like we've said, that has nothing to do with our project, so we can't respond to that question. Oh, well, we're dark sky compliant, all our lighting on site. And so while there are a few poles on site, there's no spillage beyond the property line.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wish to speak on this? No, we're good? On the board, the, the request that's being made to us is, you all saw the engineering report with all of the red ink on it?
Yeah.
And we're being asked to give a conditional approval so they don't have to come back here before they get it all ironed out. I'm not inclined to do that, but I'd like to hear what you all think about that. Anyone wish to speak?
I do.
Yeah?
I'm not inclined either.
I guess so.
I think, I think I've got too much to look at still. And I'm also looking at the drop dead deadline, which is September 30th. And I don't believe there's been a request for an extension on that, and it's a few days hence. So we're caught.
Well, no, we'd have to give an extension.
They'd have to request it.
Well, you can request it tonight.
Mm-hmm. And we have to approve of that. And I would suggest that it probably be extended until the end of October because we're looking at the 11th as the next time here to iron out any questions that the board might have based upon our engineering department's comments. And I certainly have not had a chance to look at those yet.
Well, there were too many unresolved ones. I did look through them and saw that there were any number that were waiting on engineering to get an answer to it. So there were too many open comments. Paul, what do you think?
I don't think we're ready to move on this quite yet. There are a few unresolved issues. I don't think they're, they're a game changer or create a real problem, but there are some minor issues that need to be... issues that need to be addressed.
Mm-hmm. Other board members?
I agree with everything that's been said.
Yeah, I'd be current, you know, we're required of applicants who are not the town to have the finished drawings before we approve it. And surely the town ought to set the standard on that, rather than be an exception to it. So, if you could request an extension from us, we'd be glad to give it.
Yes, we have to request that extension to iron out all the details to the end of October.
Okay, so if we can have a motion to continue and extend until October, Jen?
Couple of things.
Yeah.
If I may. So, I spoke to the engineering division today, to both Scott and I spoke to representative from Bowler. It appears as though, as Jared mentioned, that the changes are not substantial, or the comments are not substantial. However, I did ask if, you know, I asked the representative from Bowler if, you know, they felt confident they could address those comments in between now and your next meeting. There is confidence in doing so. Scott did indicate that, again, they're not substantial changes. So, one, I would, I would say, you know, if you're so inclined, perhaps you could ask us to draft up a positive motion, provided that they address those comments at the next meeting. Perhaps we don't need to have representatives from the consultant team to be here, but if we...
I think if they're technical, we should have somebody who can answer technical questions here.
I'm saying if they've ironed those comments out and engineering has given their clean referral, I don't see the reason for them to come and read the draft motion into the record. But we can certainly draft one, be ready for that, considering the fact that they think they can address those comments. And before doing so, sort of back up a little bit, because again, we haven't seen these folks since, I want to say, late June.
Right.
So, we really haven't had an opportunity to address one of the requests that they had sent in previously, as it related to waivers for site plan review requirements. So, I think we may want to address that tonight, formally at your meeting, and just make sure that you're okay with these waivers that they have requested. And then you can move on to make those, to make that decision on what you'd like us to do.
I could not go back and review the request for waivers. Did anyone hear? No, I appreciate your thought on this, but I think we might be better off continuing, extending till the end of October, just in case. And if they get ready ahead of time, that's fine, but they don't have to, we would have that time allowed for, and bring up the subject of the waivers on the 11th.
Well, so, one issue with doing that is if you're not granting the waivers, they would have to revise their site plans. And so, it's important for the applicant to know whether or not you're okay with these waivers, because they relate specifically to the number of driveways. I don't have them memorized, so I'd have to read from the script. But perhaps we can just go through them individually, because again, if you're not okay with that, then that directly affects the site plan.
I don't have a problem with that, Charlotte, going through the waivers, as I understand what kind of a wrinkle that would throw into things.
And understanding the tight timeframe that they're working with and, you know, we want to try to be...
Okay, well, let's go through them and see. We've got a list of six.
Six, yep.
Okay, number one. A waiver from this requirement, this is on the three driveway curb cuts, is that it?
Would you like me to read into the record the waiver request or the language?
Yeah, would you please?
So, pursuant to, again, because this was drafted in June or early July, they were referencing the old bylaw. So, during this, or I should say, not the old bylaw, they were referencing the recotified bylaw, which we were using at the time. So, excuse the references which we no longer use. With that said, section 240 dash 12 point E to H, it's related to access and circulation requirements. It says there shall be no more than one driveway connection to any lot, to any street, except that separate entrance and exit driveways may be provided where necessary to safeguard against hazards and to avoid congestion. So, Bowler is requesting a waiver from this requirement for the project to allow for a total of three driveways, driveway connections to the site. These driveway connections will serve the public parking area, apparatus, vehicle bay, exit to Sandwich Road, and apparatus vehicle department staff entry from Sandwich Road. And perhaps on the site plan, you could better articulate what I just said. Essentially, they're asking for three driveways. One for the visitor parking and...
Right.
Located there, and obviously the apparatus driveway, and then the staffing entrance, as well as apparatus driveway.
Well, and it's right next to the driveway to the, to the church that's next door to it. So, there'd be four in a row.
So, in my, in my conversations with the fire department indicate that they need all three of those driveways. Obviously, the apparatus driveway is likely the most important. The driveway to the north or to the right on this image is also important, as the apparat high will essentially drive in that way and circulate to the back and come into the, into the bays from the rear. That's my understanding anyway. And then, of course, the visitor parking on the, on the far left.
I think it'll be clearest if we vote on them individually as we go along.
I love that idea.
That's another way to do it. So, now, the motion has been, been read. Is there any conversation about it? Any comment? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Aye.
Paul, aye?
Pam?
Pam?
Six ayes, it passes. Okay, on the second...
Aye.
Ah, thank you. You're with us. Pam, there are going to be five more, all in a row. Okay, Jen?
Again, related to access and circulation requirements, driveways shall not exceed 24 feet in width at the street line or lesser width, as will be sufficient to accommodate the traffic to be generated unless a greater width is required by the town bylaw or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Bowler is requesting a waiver for this requirement for the project to allow for a total of two driveway connections to exceed 24 feet in width at the Sandwich Road street line.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any comment, question? All in favor? John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Aye.
Paul, aye?
Pam?
Pam?
It's the television. She's watching the television. It's five seconds delay.
She should mute her TV.
Yeah, and listen on the phone.
Okay, let's not try to do that. Three.
The last four are related to the landscape requirements, the first being the ziriscape to aid in conserving the town of Falmouth's drinking water supply. Ziriscape is required for all applicable development projects. Bowler is requesting a waiver from this requirement, as outlined in their letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? John?
Aye.
Bob?
I just need, so what would replace that?
My understanding is because, as Jared mentioned, because of the lack of maintenance crew to, they've already provided plantings that would essentially require very little maintenance and very little watering.
It looks like clearcut on everything that isn't a building. The plan looked like nearly a clearcut.
There are some ornamental trees, and we are replacing, providing some buffer on the planned left side here. There are some additional tree plantings on this side to give a buffer between the adjacent property. But there are a lot of low-lying plantings, like shrubs, throughout the site to break up that clearcut, like you said, yeah.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Aye.
Paul, aye?
Pam? Wait, we've got the delay.
Pam?
Aye.
Aye. There, okay, that passes. Okay, four.
This is related to landscape again. Again, requirement on the plan, the landscape plan shall show the location of existing trees greater than four inches in caliper, measurement at height of four feet, six inches. Bowler is requesting a waiver from this requirement.
I'll second.
Okay, John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I think there's some value in showing the existing trees.
They're going to take them down.
Yeah, most of them are going to be gone.
They're taking them down. And they're replacing them, if you look at the plan, they're replacing them with either asphalt, grass, or shrubs, he said.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So, Paul, we're just waiting for your vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Five.
Again, landscaping standards, these, this is related to street trees. To reduce heat and glare on streets and sidewalks, street trees from the approved list are required in accordance with the following specifications. Again, Bowler is requesting a waiver from this requirement. My understanding with this one is that, again, the vehicles entering and exiting the site, obviously with street trees being where they are, there could be issues related to that.
They have a habit of growing, too. They get bigger and bigger.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Any other comments?
No.
John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Aye.
Paul, aye?
Pam?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes six.
Last one. This is related to landscape performance standards and parking lot interiors. Again, vegetated islands are required within paving areas behind the street setback according to the following specifications. And again, Bowler is requesting a waiver from that requirement.
Second.
Any questions, comments? John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim? Charlotte, aye?
Aye.
Paul, aye?
Pam?
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
So, they have their waivers, and now we have a request for an extension and a continuation. We need a motion.
Okay, they have requested an extension to our last meeting in October, whatever that date will be.
I think it's the...
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, thank you.
And I move that we accept the request for an extension. It's verbal currently, but it should be submitted in writing. If you would, please do so, since...
Are we also given the planner the permission to draft a positive motion?
That's a separate issue.
Okay.
For clarity's sake, that is the decision deadline, which you're asking to be extended to October 25th.
Right. Okay. So, and we had a second on that?
A second.
Okay. John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Paul?
Paul, aye.
Pam? On the, on the extension of the deadline?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
And now, then, I will move that we, if we wish to do so tonight, to instruct the planners to draft a positive, preliminary positive motion.
There is such a thing?
Well, positive motion, then, in case everything is met.
You just created it. Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can just have in our back pocket, so to speak.
Correct. So, if everything is met by the 11th, we have it there. But if it's not...
I don't think we need a vote on that.
I don't know, we've done a vote before on that, but, and sometimes we have it.
Either way, whatever you feel more comfortable with.
Right, we'll have it. Okay, so, that was a yes and no.
Okay, so that was a motion? I'll second the motion.
Oh.
I don't think we're going to vote on it.
We're not going to vote on it?
We don't need a vote, no.
Charlotte questioned whether we needed it or not. Sometimes we have, sometimes we haven't, so. But we do need a written request.
Yes, okay.
Because we'll show the vote that...
That'll be to the 25th.
So, in the meantime, we will work closely with the engineering division with Bowler to make sure that those comments are addressed. We will draft a positive motion for you for the next hearing, and in between time, we'll be in communication with the applicant to see which way you're headed. Okay.
Great, and I just want to point out, too, that I don't know if it's, I think it's a new process, the stormwater application that they have to file with the engineering department. It's a new process now. So, they actually have to file an application with engineering on their own as well regarding the stormwater. So, if that doesn't pass, they're not going to go anywhere, anyway. So, that's, that's why this stormwater issue is kind of being taken up with engineering through their application process.
Okay, but it seemed to me, among all of those, that was, those were a very large number of engineering comments.
Yep.
And they were not all stormwater.
No, 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 I know. I'm just, I'm just letting you know, because that's a new process through engineering. I didn't even know it existed until this application, and it's because they're disturbing, I believe, more than an acre.
Correct.
So...
In the future, will that process be complete before people come before us?
I don't know.
It's more for us to figure out.
Yeah, we'll have to talk with engineering about that.
We need to look at that.
Yep.
Okay, but you'll be good to go next time, it looks like, depending on your engineer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Yep. Okay, next. What do we have? An applicant, Edward and Lori O'Brien. We've been waiting patiently. Site plan review application for an accessory apartment located at 20 Sarah Lane, which is in east, 21 Sarah Lane, excuse me, East Falmouth, off Caria Road, near the Crane Wildlife Management Area. There's a public hearing notice?
Yeah. Notice of this public hearing was published on 9/9/22, and 22 of butters were notified by regular mail.
And speaking for, we have...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction. I'm representing Priscilla O'Brien, her son Edward, and his wife Lori. We're requesting an accessory dwelling unit that will be attached to their existing home. The unit will be 24 by 24, one bedroom. We have a pretty clear review from the planning board. I'll try and do this really quick and get you moving. Seems like all of the comments have either been addressed. We added drywells to the plan yesterday. We did not redate the plan, but we will put drywells in on the new structure. There was one comment from the building commissioner that they wanted a, an access to the electric panel. The dwelling unit will have its own sub-panel off of the main electrical system, and if we need to, we can put an exterior disconnect in. They will have keys to each other's.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Did the building inspector approve that as being a connected structure?
Yes.
We have it in writing.
That's a change from the previous building inspector.
That is a big change.
That's just a matter of opinion, and it's his right to do so. But that makes the whole thing.
Yep.
I was, that's a big change.
Mm-hmm.
It's his job, not ours. It's his job, not ours.
Is that an enclosed connection?
Is that a, is the connection a positive or a negative?
They used to require it had to have windows and heated to make it substantial. And you, that was, in order to make that, being able to go higher than 18 feet, it was a big battle for years.
It had to be connected, yep.
Yeah, so now, we have a new inspector, and he has a difference of opinion.
It doesn't need any sidewalls, it doesn't need any heat in it.
It's fine with me, I just was, I'm learning.
Do you want walls or heat?
Oh. That's a lot of money.
I was just trying to understand, because I've been on the board a long time, and all of a sudden it's just so long.
That the connection would need walls and heat?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Was there any discussion with the building?
It wasn't even...
Yeah, the first thing I did was ask the building department, or the building commissioner, what his take on this was, and he said it was definitely attached.
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 It didn't matter if it was an apartment, it was just an accessory structure had to be there, so it had to be like either 18 or 22 feet, it was like, really...
I didn't understand right away that the connector had to be...
This is a whole different, it's fine with me, I just, it's just a change that I wasn't used to.
Any other comments or questions?
Would you prefer it detached without...
No, it's another permit.
Yeah, we'll keep it as it is.
Now they're eliminating a bedroom in the main house?
No.
No, we've actually have a septic permit to add to the existing system. We have a 2.77 acre lot, so we've got plenty of room here.
Yeah. I can't read those, because things are too small.
Yeah, the things are too small, yeah. Any other questions? It meets all the requirements of the bylaw, so it looks good, and this will make 44 total, counting the ones tonight, 44 permitted, not permitted...
Approved by us.
Approved by us, right, if we do it. So, it looks as if it meets all the requirements, it looks like a really good-looking project. I'm sorry you had to wait all night to get here, but here you are. So if we could have a request or a motion to approve at our next meeting on the 11th, you don't have to come back for that, it will go through, and you'll be all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have time for a planning board discussion, and Paul has committee report. Right, definitely. And he has a handout for his committee report.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to give a very brief summary of the Water Quality Management Committee meeting yesterday. And I printed this out because I thought it was a very significant meeting. And it was a joint meeting between the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition and Water Quality Management Committee. And the handout at that meeting is there, I'm not gonna go through all the detail, but I thought it might be nice for you to take a look at it. Basically, who attended this meeting? Water Quality Management Committee, Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, Scott Horsley as a consultant, Buzzards Bay Coalition, Kerford Technologies, Conservation Law Foundation, and others. John Drury was there and made comments from his perspective as well. The purpose of the meeting was to talk about the nitrogen measurements of Little Pond. You see some of the results in the PowerPoint presentation, I'm not gonna go into that. But basically, there's six IA systems have been approved by DEP. And they reviewed the performance of three of them in Falmouth, and some of them are working fairly well, some are not. Then there was a discussion of what the Water Quality Management Committee wants to propose on the Buzzards Bay estuaries, and they looked at four different areas. Quistler Harbor has 149 parcels, Fiddles Cove, 153, Rans Canal, 304, West Falmouth Harbor has 639 parcels. That's about 1,200 parcels that potentially would be impacted.
Wait, you're going too fast for me. I'm trying to follow along on your handouts, where?
You can't.
Oh.
You won't be able to go that fast.
No, I can't.
There's too much detail to go into all that, but you can look at it.
Oh.
DEP has a draft proposal, and the first option to put IA systems on all properties within 300 feet of active water sheds in five years.
Is that practical?
Second option is watershed permits on all 14 nitrogen-impaired estuaries in Towne and Falmouth. So what this committee was trying to do was get together a response by next month to DEP and what they might be able to do. There was a discussion that Barnstable and Falmouth, our studies are pretty advanced, and DEP did not consult with these towns before proposing these options. And there were a lot of suggestions discussed, including prioritization of parcels, impacted areas, maybe we should deal with specific parcels before getting into all the parcels. What about the funding source of project limitations? The impact of future maintenance costs on affordable housing projects. This is an issue that John brought up that I'm not sure they were thinking a lot about, but there were a lot of, it was some really good discussions. And what the intent is, to continue discussion strategy between participants and try to come up with some kind of response to DEP next month. So, in two minutes, that's what happened, a lot happened, and it's gonna impact what we do if DEP insists on some of the options they're talking about.
How does, how does John's earlier report that the IA systems aren't working well enough to be worth the money factor into this?
That's on page three.
Thank you.
Right at the bottom. 300 systems, three of them meet the standards. One of the other items that was very interesting was they had a study of, is it Little Pond that got sewored?
Mm-hmm.
And they, yeah, the graphs and the, how well it's, the sewer-ing has worked here when they, the nitrate's in Little Pond. It's a really complicated subject.
Too much adjusted this meeting now, but...
Yes, it's very complicated.
You can take a look at it.
It is, I don't even know how to read that chart.
Charlotte? I would have a request, whenever we get something like this, if some kind of executive summary goes through, I think for me, because Paul may stay on top of these things, but I haven't looked at these things in years, it'd take me an hour to prepare to understand what we're talking about. It's just a total waste of time. I'd like to have something, hey, it's working pretty good and we're going forward, or this, it shows it isn't working and we gotta do something else, but...
Well, I think the most appropriate way of adjust net issue was to invite the Water Quality Management Committee to make a presentation to the planning board on where they are, because they're the ones who are proposing this.
Probably a summarized version, not without so much detail as this, in a couple of pages. I couldn't make heads or tails of this.
What I'm getting out of it is that a large group of what appear to be very qualified and involved people are trying to address the issue but haven't made much of a dent in it. Is that accurate?
My choice was not to give you the PowerPoint, and I thought it was better to at least provide and show there's a lot of detail being done by these committees, by the Water Quality Management Committee. And they're trying to address the issue. But if you remember, what started with all of this several years ago was DEP wanted the town to sewer the entire town at a cost of over $600 million.
Uh huh.
So that committee was set up to look at alternative areas where they might be able to do something. And the oyster farming is one, the reactive barriers, another one that has some positive results with, and they're trying to deal with these issues in a very comprehensive and straightforward manner, without spending an awful lot of money that's just not gonna be available.
Yes, and they keep coming back with that answer, so all they're doing is, you know, trying to slow down the speeding train. It seems to me that the most that the planning board could contribute to an effective strategy on nitrogen is to stop permitting building near the shore. Just stop until they figure it out. That's not gonna happen. So until there is something that the planning board can actually do, I think it's wonderful, Paul, that you're willing to do this and keep us abreast of it, but I don't feel useful.
We don't have a say in a single-family home, a duplex, or it's gotta get up to be more than five houses before we get to comment.
We have a say on the long-range plan, and we have a say on bylaws. And we could have a bylaw that would require that you can't, if we wanted to. This would be really extreme, I can't imagine we would do it.
No, you were saying that we don't approve, we don't, we don't, we don't have the right to approve them.
Same language, right.
That's what I was trying to point out.
Right.
Want a whole new bylaw saying you can't build, that's a different story.
Right.
I agree, we have the right to do that.
We do. The right to propose it, and then move out of town.
Can I make one final comment? John attended that meeting, and he might want to have a different perspective than what I had presented. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Well, I just want, I think that they're doing a great job. They had people from Barnstable there, they had the coalition, I forget the title, but Buzzards Bay Coalition representative was there. So there's a lot of people that are working on finding the solution for nitrogen in the embayments, and they're, they're having a really hard, they have a hard time coming up with a solution. And one of the, one of the, a couple of the thoughts were that the real problem for the nitrogen going into these ponds are all the homes that are on the ponds.
Right.
So, they really would like to come up with a mandate that anybody that's within 300 feet of, say, Green Pond, or any of these ponds, that they would have to, within five years, replace their septic system with a denitrification system that actually works. They have a couple of them, they're really, they want to get down to six parts per million. And there's a couple of systems that the state has approved that will actually do that. There's lots of systems, but not only, two of them get down to the six parts per million, so... And not just in Falmouth, they're talking about Barnstable, Sandwich, Downcape.
All righty.
But that's, that's pretty radical, and, but that's the real solution.
Which are the three that work?
Well, on page three, it shows, it shows that there's two...
It named six.
Two microfa, two microfast systems, they get down to six, and there's one RUC system in the Towne and Falmouth that gets down to six.
But there's 13 RUC systems that don't get down to six.
Right, and, but they've all, recently they've come up with a couple of systems, I think it's Nitrex and, there's another one that starts with a Nitro or something, but, but they're not really approved by the state yet. They have to, they go through a long process, multiple years, and you have to have at least 50 systems in the ground and test it for, I think, three years before they can actually say that they're, they can have general use.
Isn't Mike McGrath one of those systems that...
I think he was the RUC system.
He's the RUC, okay.
So, but originally, Falmouth, the Board of Health required 19 parts, then they went to 12 parts, now they're at six parts, and that's what they require, that's what they want, wanted to...
What causes, well, that's probably too technical, never mind.
If you look at slide six, the performance from 2015 to 2020, of the three most frequently used IA systems in Falmouth, the RUC system is 14, and only 1%, only one of them gets down to six milligrams per liter. Microfast has two. So...
It could be different numbers of people in that household. You don't know what would cause that variance.
It's hard to mandate an IA system meets a certain criteria if they can achieve that in the field.
Yeah.
And also, the DEP has changed, they've, they have changed their requirements also over time, and that's what, in the next 30 days, we're supposed to come out with new regulations.
Anyway.
Anyway.
So we're chasing a moving target.
Well, Falmouth is really pretty far along, because we have plans to do sewer-ing in East Falmouth, you know, on Acapescot and Shore Drive and Davisville and Central Ave. It may be eight, nine, 10 years, 12 years before it gets done, but we have plans to move forward.
Yeah, it's getting there. John, if, if we were to have such a bylaw, who would initiate that? Where would that start? With the Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Then I would suppose this same group is working with the Board of Health to try to get that going.
Well, they haven't, they've had that conversation, but...
So there's thoughts about it? Okay, but it doesn't...
But the other part, there's also, you know, monitor, now they have, they have wireless monitoring now, which is a new, new thing. They don't have to have somebody go there and test it every three, every three months, they have wireless monitoring. And who's gonna pay for all of it? Does the Towne and Falmouth subsidize 3,000 homes putting these systems in over a five-year period, or, or 5,000 homes, whatever the number is, it's really complicated.
It is, it's a big issue.
It is.
Yeah.
So, but they're really working hard at it, and they're gonna come up with a solution.
Well, I thank both of you for working on it.
When Eric came here to speak to us, he said the problem is that the towns are small, and so we have a small number of systems, and DEP requires a certain number of systems, and he suggested that the towns come together, coalesce.
Regionalize.
Yes, so that perhaps we can do something here.
And that's what, that's what they were doing yesterday.
Ah, okay.
That's the intent.
You know, your husband Bill was there, and he had a lot to say also, because he's been working on this for about 40 years, so...
You must hear it at home.
I don't want to hear anything more.
But it was a good meeting to be there, I really enjoyed it.
See, one of the most successful ones is on the vineyard. But that's where almost all of them are. We think, I think we have one of them installed here in Falmouth.
That might relate to the money issue.
The Nitro or Nitrex, one of the two.
One of the two, and I think, I don't remember which one it is, I get those two confused.
Paul?
I think the bottom line is, we have a Water Quality Management Committee, I think, is doing a very good job, very qualified people.
Uh huh.
And I think we need to rely on them to address some of these issues that impact all of us. I think it's a big deal. And if you want more specific detail, we can request the chairman to come in and give a brief summary, and you can ask whatever questions you want. But I was trying to give you a flavor of what happened there, and there's a lot going on, and there's too much to go into on a brief committee report.
My initial reaction is, I'm really glad some other board is doing it. Right, and it's good to hear about it occasionally. Whether we would want to take the time, it would depend on how busy we are from applicants, because they really have to be our first concern. And then, we have, for a long time now, about two years, put off getting any kind of a start on the, whether you want to call it an update or a rewrite, on the local comprehensive plan, and we need to attend to our own business and be glad that the Water Quality Management Committee is attending to that business for the rest of us. I'd like to bring up a different issue here as part of, I don't know if it's an announcement, a committee report, or just a request. It seems to me that we could have a more efficient way of running meetings if we didn't have to read the full motion into the record. That we could just ask this motion to be included in the written, written record, that's hard to say, written record, and that we could have a two or three sentence summary of what we're approving, where we're approving it, the main items, but we don't need all the numbers and so forth that have been part of it as it goes along, very bureaucratically. So I, my request is to ask the town council's office, what are the rules, I tried to look them up on Google and didn't get very far, what are the rules in Massachusetts on the requirements for reading a motion, the full motion into the record? And I couldn't find them. So I wonder if we could find out that, and if we could have, in addition to having the full amount of information that applicants might later need, and that the planning board and other boards need to hand into, be handed into the record, included, and we have a short paragraph to trigger that. And we could have that soon.
Yeah, any different conditions?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, conditions are something that have to, we have to, it doesn't pass if we don't find, they're findings that we have to have. So we don't have to read them, because they gotta be there if we don't find, but findings, I mean, have to be that way, but conditions are something we have to discuss.
But we have two kinds of conditions. We have standard conditions, that are in fact repeated from the bylaw.
Okay, well then we don't need to do those, let's get those out of the way.
Right, so, there they go.
Yeah.
But then we also have conditions for this particular individual instance.
Right. Those are the ones we need to discuss.
Those are the ones.
That's all we need to hear, in my opinion.
Right. Well, we need to discuss all of it.
Right.
But as far as wearing Bob out and Pat...